To start, if we're at seven o'clock, this is the Rollford Planning Board. It's February sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And I believe the main item of agenda, the only item of the agenda tonight is what is the former Bluewin Building. And in looking at the minutes from last month, it looks to me that we continued the Bluewin Board's plan to tonight. I think, although it's unclear to me, the minutes indicate that the public hearing was suspended at eight oh three as opposed to concluded. So I guess my big question for the board is to whether or not the public hearing continues, or are we?
We continued it so we could, once we heard the revised plan, the public wanted to come in.
Okay, and if I recall my email correctly, it seems to me that a revised plan perhaps, or documents was recently provided to the town. And perhaps I might start by asking if Mr. Krebs had a chance to look at that and has any comments on that.
So just to give you an update, what happened after the last meeting was, to go back, yes, the public hearing was continued, I think. At least that was I believe everybody's intent, although there's nobody here, I don't think, to comment on any of butters. But so after the last meeting, we met Tobin Farwell, myself, and Jay Stephen met over at Civil Consultants to review the drainage issue, specifically the water leaving the front of the site on the Main Street. I know Mike has been in the loop, I don't know if everybody else has, I don't think they have. Jay did not feel comfortable witting in on the matter because he didn't know what was in the role for drainage. He didn't know anything about downtown drainage. As you probably recall, the new road agent had said it was fine with him. And then he recanted that statement after he realized there was a little bit more of impervious surface being proposed on the front side of the front of the lot. And he didn't want to weigh in not knowing what was going on. As a result of that, Jay, I was unaware of this, Mike probably knew about it. But Caroline, I think, brought up that Hoyle Tanner Associates had done a drainage analysis of some of the drainage in this area. So we asked Hoyle Tanner Associates, Aaron LaChance from Hoyle Tanner, who is, was on the planning board at Rollford one time and knows this area, has had either he or I think actually his staff engineer what the situation. So he's here tonight to talk about the issue of sending more water from the front parking lot onto Main Street. The rest of the stormwater, it's my understanding Jay is fine with it. It's just this area that's the problem. So that's sort of where we stand. Yes, I've looked at the plans, the photometric plans have been revised, the site plans have been revised. I mean, there's really not a whole lot, everything is basically there. So it's not, there's not a whole lot of movement with these plans. The building is there that, you know, the million dollar question is, or not the million dollar question, really the central question is, what are we going to do with this area up here? You know, there's really two options as I see it, and I think really Aaron should weigh in on this. One is to keep the parking lot the same and reduce and eliminate. I think it's four or five parking spaces which should further exacerbate the parking issue, or send water onto a town road and, you know, in hopes that it doesn't create a problem. So that's sort of where we stand.
Okay, so it sounds as if the board agrees with me that we should ask our guests tonight from Hoyle Tanner to address the board. If you would please.
Sure thing. Might I come up to the table?
Please. Do you want to pull it over, Aaron?
Oh, sure.
What would be most helpful for you?
I think it's fine there. I'm not going to give you much specific.
I think our recording secretary would like you to give your full name and business address for the record.
There's a card, but my name is Aaron LaChance. I'm an associate with Hoyle Tanner Associates. We're a consulting engineering firm, and we've done some work in town here, including the recent drainage improvements down at Lower Mill, which included replacement of a few lengths of pipe in the subject system that the, this site, the Blue Mill site drains into. So we are familiar with the system. We did an analysis to size the outlet pipes, which are a thirty-six inch pipe and a thirty-inch pipe. So a pretty big pipe upsized from, I believe, fifteen inches in the existing condition. So the town's aware that the system had some issues. We actually had some sinkholes that formed, which is why that project happened. But in looking at the system to size the pipe, we realized that the piping is undersized. So when John called me and said, you know, explained the project and said, you know, does the system have capacity? And the short answer to the, I guess would be no, with the caveat that the town recognizes that the system needs to be upgraded, and they've started out from the outfall and worked up. We looked at what this site would increase for flows into the system, and it's very minimal. I want to say it's point five percent, and there's a letter here that documents our review. So engineering judgment would say that that's a very small increase, and in our opinion, it most likely would not cause an issue. However, if you want to strictly adhere to the site plan regulations that say no increase in the post-development, which is not our opinion to say whether the board should not require that, you know, certain guarantees would say that, you know, something else should be done. So the letter that you have proposes some solutions, should the board think that that's necessary? But we also in there say that the percentage increase is very small. And given the fact that the town, over the long term, though not necessarily in the capital approved plan, will be upgrading the rest of the system. We built some extra capacity into the sections that were upgraded, knowing that as future development happens, you want to have some capacity built in. You know, not that a lot of impervious should be added to the drainage basin, but to allow for that. So there's some conservatism there. And as you work further up in the system, further uphill towards Town Hall here, the impact that a increase in runoff would have to the system would mitigate. You had a, you're dumping in more flows towards the outlets of the system, the potential issue that would cost would go up. So can we say with a hundred percent confidence that this point five percent increase isn't an issue? No, but using engineering judgment, it's very small. Where it is introduced uphill, very far uphill from the outfall, it most likely won't be an issue. But, you know, we can't put that in writing. So we tried to give the board the information and have the board make the decision. There are some solutions, you know, as John touched on, to alleviate the post-development runoff increase. But, you know, they come at a cost which may not be warranted for the scale of the project. Some of the things that we included would be tree filters, basically things that, mechanisms that hold the water on site and retain it and infiltrate.
And I know that this is, you know, this is Aaron's time to talk about the municipal storm drain system and the impact of this project on that. But the other thing that I, the one thing that Jay Stephen does have some expertise in, and I'm sure Aaron does too. And he doesn't know the site exactly, but Jason with pretty good confidence that he doesn't think the material under this parking lot or in this, on this lot is probably any good. And that was his biggest concern, like what, how do we, you know, how do we, we can't just dig a hole, put a catch basin in and hope it works. It's probably, you know, there may be ledge, unsuitable material, God knows what. And so that's the other concern is that, you know, even if there was, you know, a way to retain the water, you know, can the water be retained? Sure, but, you know, if half this material needs to be, you know, removed and more suitable material brought in, is it worth it? So that's sort of, you know, piling on to what Aaron is talking about.
In a new site plan application where you're building on a new parcel and creating a new lot, you create a detention basin or whatever the mechanism is, and if you have a little bit of an increase, well, you just make it bigger. Well, if there's no, you know, detention basin here, there's no facility to just make bigger. It's a constrained site, and perhaps the subsurface conditions aren't amenable to infiltration, which really would be your only solution.
Please, Mr. Raisin.
I would think that, and I truly believe that the additional flow we're creating by adding more pavement is nominal. But, and I also understand that the total run from this project down to the outlet is not completed, although the lower end was by the mills between the sinkhole. But that project on the whole, when I say project, I mean from this site down to where it exits, that whole run, what percentage of that run would you say is done? I know we did the very end by the mills, but are we a third through that project? Are we a quarter?
No, what, less than that.
So significantly less, so realistically in time wise, I'm just thinking that we just did ten percent, the very last ten percent of this project. But I do, I do sit here and think that there hasn't been a problem all along with the parking lot. He's adding very minimum space. I mean, it seems like a lot of area, but a lot of area as it pertains to water flow, I think is very minimal, so. But I still don't know how much of that run was done, and you're saying it's just the very tail ten percent.
Probably ten percent by linear footage, probably more than ten percent by cost in that the lower section is the biggest pipe and it's expensive. And certainly is challenging Jason's and Melanin and the river to the outfall, so.
Financially wise, not distance wise, but financially wise, because you said this ten percent was an expensive ten percent. Funding as a whole, how much is that project on? Is it a quarter, done spending the money?
Maybe twenty, I'm guessing, but maybe twenty percent.
Still not, the rate amount.
It's a, it's a big system. When you, when you look at the trunk line that runs there, it's, you know, there's a lot of footage. And then you have the, you know, the branches off of that, so it's a big network. It's the, basically most of the village, the Santa Claus village here.
You evaluated the entire run when you did the project, your project?
Yes.
So you have an idea of the condition of the current in use, although we've seen failure at the tail end.
We evaluated to determine the inflow, the quantity of water. We didn't look at all the individual pipes and say, this pipe is bad, this is bad. We just know that based on sizing that the trunk line is undersized.
I don't think there's ever been a problem with water coming out of this, I mean, I drive down that street every day, there's never been a problem that I've noticed.
Oh, we have, we've, well, we had some significant issues when we had larger storms, yeah. You'd see the tops of the, of the structures coming.
Yeah, nice and north of the side there. That structure was.
All that was, that was, and there were giant sinkholes, like the pipe was broken on the lower end. So all the water was draining fine from the top, but once it got down to the bottom, it didn't have an outlet, so it was just going everywhere else.
That was the sinkholes.
That's why we had to fix that.
So this, this would only be a problem during significant rain events. Can you comment on how often, it's like one hundred year event, five hundred year?
We, well, short answer is yes, the more significant the event, the more likelihood that there will be an overtopping or a surcharging issue. I can't tell you, the increase is so minimal with this point five percent runoff increase that the, you're not going to change the frequency with which there's an issue because of this development. It's only, it's a blip on, on the hydrograph that we look at, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's so much impervious service in this area, how would you?
Yeah, town hall.
It's fairly negligible, but it's, I mean, we're here because our regs say that you can't increase the runoff. It's, and our regs, as Aaron said, they sort of, they were designed to address new construction on a raw piece of land. It's unfortunately, we don't have that here. But, and the other problem with this site as everybody knows, it's on a hill, you know. It's, there's nothing we can do back here to help the situation. Because that, we might have been, they might have been able to deal with that, but it doesn't help.
I totally think it's the best and highest, highest and best use of this property.
I'm glad Aaron's here, you know, but if you want it in my opinion, do I think it's worth, and I don't have a site plan, do I think it's worth losing, you know, four or five spaces and a travel way? No, I think it's ridiculous, you know. I think it would really impact the liability of this project. It doesn't alleviate the, you know, the drainage issue, but I think one outweighs the other.
Could I ask a question about the, what you mean by a tree filter in the southwest, southeast corner?
So that's, it's a system where you are infiltrating stormwater through a basin, which has vegetation in it, often a tree. And it's a combination of layers of soil where, as the water pulls through, it is filtered out and then ultimately infiltrates into, into the groundwater. As John pointed out, the site, the soils have to be conducive to that. You have to have a free draining material. If you have silty or clayey materials, they may not be a good solution because you just gain infiltrated.
And the other problem on this site is that, for those of you, Mike has the full size site plan. But that southeast corner of the site is, it's steep as heck.
This is a, this is an embankment right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the real problem. This is, this is what Aaron's talking about, this corner.
This is where you were going to put some vegetation, right? So that's what you stuck with that area right there.
Right, that's a steep embankment. So if you put a tree filter box there, you'd be looking at a concrete, the wall of a concrete block.
It would be nice if it was flat ground, but.
That would be almost impossible, I think.
Could do in that location.
Could you comment upon that air force?
Very steep right there. Um, so, 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 this area here, right on Main Street, it's just a little garden.
That's a good point, and again, it was, having a, having a perched situation, it would be tough to infiltrate because you're going to have whatever wall or system you put in there to firm up to create that tree wall. You likely just have it taken out of the side and that might be some of that, so maybe that's not a good, good location or a good suggestion. But it was trying to give the board an idea of the, of the things that you might look at if you were looking to capture all of this runoff and infiltrate it.
Okay.
The other thing I want to point out is that, you know, I don't know what the cost of these, these things are. So, yeah, I don't, I don't want to put the applicant into the corner having to look at these things if they're completely unviable. But I felt like our due diligence to offer the board some solutions that you might want to at least talk about.
Are these other alternatives that you laid out for us, are they, I sort of have the impression that it's probably incorrect. They go from least expensive to most expensive, or is that incorrect?
I don't believe in any, any order of cost.
Okay.
I would say that a bio retention system would be more involved and more expensive than a tree filter. A bio retention would be the second option. And then the third option is permeable pavers, which in theory are a spectacular idea. But in practice, they're, they're rarely maintained. They are great for the first few years, and then they're not vacuumed, and they fill up with sand and other things from winter maintenance activities. And then they just function as a regular paver and they just create runoff, so.
Right, okay. I don't have any further questions for Aaron, is anybody else have any questions? Should we let it be excused from the hearing, or?
I appreciate your input.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, the letter stands on its own, but I want to come this evening to answer questions. Feel free to reach out. My contact info is on my card if the board has further questions.
Thank you very much for your time and coming to Rollford and get on the planning board again.
We'll see.
Thanks a lot, Aaron.
Yep.
Would be appropriate to next hear from the applicant, since there's no other public here. Please come on over.
Jeff Haffey. Yeah. Yeah, as we talked about down here, really tight. Yeah, actually, there are, actually, those are good ideas, he hadn't done some of those ideas, but on a larger site. You know, one of them was the island, you do an island, a bio retention island. But obviously, if you look, like, where would my, maybe it would just wipe out my parking, right? It's a basin, basically, that you put in the lot and it becomes a landscaped island. And then the, the tree walls are actually the same concept. It's a basin, but a tree goes, you see them on city sidewalks, and a tree goes into it. But then it also is a concrete basin, so it's, you know, four feet high. So as you can see here, you try to stick those things there. First of all, you want the outflow to go evenly on a tree basin. You can't have the outflow waterfalling off one side of it, you got it onto a sidewalk, would be insane. So it would require a huge retaining wall, swales each side. You're talking a major project in and of itself. And then also, I'm trying to bring the site down to make the building more open to the street. I'm not trying to wall off the building, and we're going to start like building more walls, raising elevations. We're just really trying, trying to move away from that, so that the, the site becomes more open, you know, to the pedestrian areas. So with this just landscape with the, the street trees, I think it's just going to be a little softer. And, you know, this area is still going to retain some water, it's going to slow down the water, it's going to infiltrate it. You know what I mean, because the water, this is another thing we did add as per Jay's request, is we added this curving. So the water would hit that, then it would slow down, it would also hit this landscape buckray area. Then it would move across the parking lot and then eventually end up coming out on a big event. Then it would come out the entrance, which, you know, that's where it's going to come out. So then they also did add that curving, you know, to keep it contained. This is one thing that I didn't agree with, but I think Tobin, the engineer, was just like going down the bullet list, trying to do everything Jay wanted. And he did, he did a good job, like, I think he, he completed almost all the boxes. But, but then Jay had mentioned a sidewalk to the building. Well, that would not be as, this, this would be as unwalkable with that grade. So this is actually would become a staircase.
What Jay, what Jay's concerned, Jeff wasn't at the meeting with Jay.
It would be kind of weird.
Well, it's, it's, it is kind of weird, but what Jay, what Jay's thought was, and I agree with it in theory, was that, you know, if this, if this gets busy downtown and gets more, you know, activity, people are going to want to walk up here, and he didn't really want people just turning in and walking in the, in the travel way. He wanted a dedicated place to walk. The problem is, I mean, it sounds good in theory, but now you're just in the parking lot. So what's, I, I don't know, I guess I don't know what the difference is between walking in here and walking in there, you know.
And plus it's.
And it's just.
Land currently, it would be, it would be green space, right?
Now you're dumping water onto the sidewalk.
Right, so you're going to have more and more.
Yeah, it would actually, yeah, as the water moves around the site.
It was, it was, it was a, it was a, it was a good idea, not Jay's part, but it was, I just, it doesn't.
I like the concept too, because as I'm saying, I'm trying to open it to pedestrians, I'm trying to make it.
Exacerbate your problem.
Yeah, you know, one thing.
Lose a little bit of green space, and then, you're right, it's a sluice for water.
Yeah, and, well, I, I like, because I just did that on my other site. I actually paved the whole site, and I, then I cut the pavement and put a brick wall on the pavement right up to the building. So people can feel like they're not walking through a parking lot, right? And I think that's what planners want. But in this case, because of this hill and the integration with the sidewalk, what I kind of was concerned was, let's keep the water off the sidewalk. I even wanted to tweak out this curb, like, I don't like this radii, but Jay wanted his engineering boilerplate radii for trucks or whatever. But I would just make this, ease this out, bring it to the edge of the sidewalk. Then when you have your tip down in your sidewalk, the water's going to travel.
Well, part of Jay's issue is, in defense of Jay, that he was concerned with, how is the truck going to back up into here, into this little dock?
Totally, yeah.
And, you know, we, our thought, our thinking was that they were going to, they were probably going to pull up the hill back in this way and then swing out this way. And he wanted to make sure they weren't rolling over the curb every single time, so. It, to me, it made sense. I, I don't, I don't think that, that, I wish they would, I wish your engineer would have mirrored the, maybe it is the same radius on both sides, I can't really tell. But I think it makes sense because, you know, on the few occasions you have a big box truck backing in there, this is critical, and then heading out, that's critical. So I, I don't think that's a bad design.
No, no, and I, I understand the, the concept behind it, but what I would do then, and if that's the case, I'll just remove more curving. Because I want this tip down behind the edge.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, 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 that, no, that, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's fine, if you want to keep the rate out. The other thing I was thinking we could do, if you really want to address it, is if you widen the entrance out a little, you have a little more walking space. That's another option, I mean, it's a possibility.
You're losing green space, Ben, you don't, you don't have.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, whatever the board wants to, to solve that, I, I really, I mean, this can stay on the site plan, but I don't want somebody to come out to inspect everything and say, hey, where's your sidewalk? It was on your site plan. You know, first of all, I would never pave a sidewalk like that, it's atrocious. Second of all, that, that would end up having to be a staircase. And so I would have to do granite steps, which I do, just to make it look nicer, and pavers. But then it needs to get shoveled, and then I got to maintain, if somebody slips and falls, now I have the liability. This is always going to get plowed, always salted, it'll always be maintained. So this is actually like a better passageway, you know what I mean? As far as opening it to the, to the sidewalk. But, you know, either way, I'm not going to like dwell on that, I just didn't notice that. And, you know, there, there's also alternative design, you could run the sidewalk along the curving. But then again, how do you tie it into your sidewalk? It's just kind of weird, you know. So that's one issue that, you know, I'd rather not have it on there, but if it has to stay on there, I, I would just redesign it so it's a little nicer design than the way it's, it got drawn. And that's, I guess that's my only contention, because I, I wouldn't do that on, on one of my sites. I think everything else is in Tobin's letter, all the stuff he added that Jay wanted. I think, I think he did a good job adding all the, you know, the required or the proposed stuff. He also took out, as John had talked about, add a little more green space there, which I like that idea. So he took that out. We're still going to propose to pave the town road, extend the pavement on the town road just to make it cleaner. I actually had him, I don't know why we didn't catch this, I think he was trying to line up parking lines, but I just had him move this down, so that, that now is twenty-three and a half feet. So I'm asking for a waiver for six inches of parking now on aisle width. It's actually six inches, but we still need a waiver for six inches. But that's in the waiver letter. I did notice here, he didn't change it on the site plan, so I have to have him change that to twenty-three and a half feet. But I'll get him to change that, because he did write the waiver request on the site plan, because you guys asked. He changed it on the site plan, he just forgot to change it in the text. But he did put it in his waiver letter, the twenty-three and a half, I noticed he got that right. So, yeah, that's in the waiver letter. The waivers haven't changed, it's still aisle width, parking width, and shared use. The shared use is, is referred to in a waiver letter, but it's not referred to here because I think Tobin and, and John actually had a discussion about it. I think Tobin was saying he had to reference ordinance to request a waiver, and there's no shared ordinance. So the way he drew it, unlike my letter where I went into that long convoluted explanation of my shared use calculation, he just flat out said, okay, you're going to meet all your commercial parking, but, but your residential, you don't meet. So in the waiver letter and then on here, you can see it's, it's.
The table's right below.
It's, oh, on the table, exactly, yeah, so nineteen units, two and a half per unit, and we're only dividing twenty-one. Which is one, in the waiver letter, it's like one point, yeah, one point something per unit. But that's not the way I proposed it originally, because if you, if you take the shared use, I was dropping the two and a half to two, if you remember. And then because of the shared use calculation, your commercial needs go down. You know, when your residential's there and your commercial's not, that's where you get the shared. So pick your poison, I mean, anyway you want to pick it up.
You're shut, twenty-seven spaces, how are we covered?
Yeah, it's on the table, but. So it's in there. And let's see, what else do we have on the site plan? I don't think there's any major changes. We added your striping that you requested. And I think that's about it. I did also put in the packet that, a letter from my bank, because, you know, my financing is hanging on this project. I don't know if you read that, but basically, they're waiting until I get my approvals, until they release the funds. So I think I, I think we started this in August. So I'm kind of like getting to the point now where I got to move forward. You know, I have contractors lined up, I don't want to lose them. Obviously, I don't want to lose my financing. You know, it's just one of those things, timing, but it is a condition. I just wanted to, you know, to know that I was serious about that, like, it's an actual condition of the loan. And we're ready, you know, we're ready at this point to move forward with the project, as long as you guys are happy with the, the site plan and. And we're ready, you know, we're ready at this point to to move forward with the project, as long as you guys are happy with the the site plan and and all these little things have been ironed out. But again, on on the, um, drainage, as we talked about, that really is what we're adding. This sliver is my whole, the reason we've had all these meetings and all this back and forth and this discussion. This is why we can't make, uh, the regs, just because of this sliver, so as John said, the, you know, fallback and punt solution is you wipe out, you take that pavement out and you make this parallel parking, and you lose four or five spots. And then I'd, I would just hate to do that, because I think this, the front of the building to me is gonna be the commercial side of the building, and that's where I want businesses to be able to thrive, townspeople to be able to park, you know, the public is invited really into the building from this this side, whereas the back is more for the residential tenants. So to me, that parking's valuable to anybody, you know, who wants to use the building, because it is gonna be a public building, like, uh, you know, that's one of the things I didn't like about the last use, was it was like a manufacturing use, so nobody ever got to go in the building or enjoy it or use it. It was just employees, most of them didn't even live in Rollinsford. So my kind of mixed use plan is you live here, you also get to work here, the public gets to use the building. So that was kind of my thinking in adding the parking, that it would make it such a better project, and you know, that was about as, I mean, that's about as much as we could really get out of it, if you look at the the conditions because of the hillside. There is a very slight chance you could add a giant pond here to also make the regs, which is another thing that Tobin had mentioned. You're talking about totally reen- uh, reengineering the drainage, then you're talking about driving down Main Street, looking at a dam, a concrete outflow with a black pipe sticking out of it, you know, those spillways they put in? Really unsightly, not what I would think of when I think of Rollinsford and the history and the downtown, you know, it's a New England town. That's really not what I would wanna look at if I was driving down Main Street. So we're trying to keep the integrity here and kind of the, you know, traditional look, uh, try to make it part of the downtown and make it fit in. So I think at this point, we've done everything we can do, um. You guys have any questions for me?
So, do you have, do the board have any questions for the applicant? So I think it might be appropriate to entertain a motion to accept the plan as complete, would that be correct?
Do you intend to reopen the public, do you have two members of the public here or something?
What's that?
Do you have two members of the public here, please reopen?
Okay, I apologize, well reopen the, uh.
Not suggesting they have to talk, but if they want to do.
Well, reopen.
No, thank you.
Okay, alright, so having, hearing that the two members of the public do not wish to be heard, would be appropriate to entertain a motion to accept the plan as complete?
Didn't we already, Jen? I don't remember.
No, no, Sarah said no.
Sarah said no. So yes, it's appropriate.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And then we'll discuss.
Yep.
Okay. Then I'll move to the, uh, accept the application for seven ten Main Street as complete, then.
Okay, one second. Anyone opposed? Or all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Alright, the ayes have it. So I believe, um, the next step might be, do we do the waivers next, or do we accept, do we agree to approve the plan then?
So this is typically what you do, is you wait, you know, we, I think, uh, Jeff had asked us to, uh, act on the waivers last week or last month. Uh, we were uncomfortable not knowing what was going on, so two waivers that I'm aware of are drainage and parking. I think that's it.
Our way. What about this letter dated, uh, John dated, uh, January twenty-fifth, it's two, January twenty-fifth letters, one which appears to be a a waiver letter, which I think he made the.
Part of it is waiver, and part of it is just explaining the, uh, the updates to the plan, I think.
Yeah, it's a waiver letter.
There's one, what I'm looking at is one, the numbers one through four on it, as opposed to one through. What, what is the three-page letter, one is a two-page or number one? Is this the the letter we're, the waiver letter we're talking about?
So, yes, four waivers, the first one, you, uh, you have it?
That's what I passed out, you got it in your hand, right there. That's a waiver.
For this one here, sir?
Here, that's it.
Yep.
It's two January twenty-fifth letters. They are, obviously.
That's it, in your hand, that's a waiver letter, you got it right in your left hand.
So what we have, uh, see, I have this other letter, just for the board, say, dated January twenty-fifth, fifth, that is three pages long.
Oh, that, yeah, that's 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 basically what he's saying, the he, the the revisions made to the site plan.
With that letter and then the other letter, just the four ball of orange.
Yep. Yeah, so this is just the kind of J Stevens letters, yep.
Do you have this for your files, Sarah?
Yep, she has it.
No, I don't.
Yes, you do, it was in the packet.
It was the top thing on the packet.
It was the top thing on the packet. I I was, I'm assuming you have it.
No, I don't, I have, I have three copies of the same one, thank you.
Well, here. There you go. Yep.
So, John, would it be appropriate to go through, uh, each of the waivers on this January twenty-fifth letter, and then I think we're also dealing with the sidewalk letter, correct?
Well, uh.
The sidewalk, the oral considerations regarding the sidewalk?
Yeah, I I think, let's, let's, this is what I like, this is what I recommend that we do, is is deal with, with them, there's four waiver requests.
Okay.
Deal with those, then we'll deal, then there's some other site plan things that I wanted to bring up to you, minor things, that I think we should wrap up, uh, tonight. So the the first wa- waiver is the, uh, obviously the parking, uh, the parking counts. We all know that if you look at the parking table, uh, eighty-two spaces are required, sixty-two, I'm sorry, eighty-nine are required, sixty-two are provided. You know, I don't know what to tell you, other than, um, I, all the resident, the the, the residential calculations that we use are two and a half spaces per unit, these are one-bedroom units, um, I can't guarantee you that people are gonna have, I I would, I would venture a guess that the average unit will probably have one and a half cars. You know, if it's a one, if it's a one person living, I would assume they have one car, maybe one person will have, you know, it'd be two people living with two cars, but it it doesn't really matter, you know, what I say, what Jeff says, or what the justification is, there's really no other solution. So if the building is gonna be used, and I don't think the proposed use is all that intensive compared to what it's been used for in the past, you gotta either, or, you know, I think you sort of gotta agree that it's just not enough parking, and if if it impacts anybody, it's gonna impact them.
Right.
Not gonna impact that.
But I think he's done every, he's made every effort to maximize the available.
I would agree.
It's all mill separated between the railroad line and Main Street, I mean, I agree that, I would not have a problem with parking.
So I, let's just go through, I I think it might be easier to look at these universally, because they really are all types of areas. So the second one is the, um, the size of the parking spaces, we require ten by twenty, but a common engineering practice now is nine by seventeen. Most, a lot of times in cities now allow that, so I think that's fine. Um, and then the other one, as you, as Jeff pointed out, the back here, he's shy shy of, uh, that aisle width by six inches. I, you know, I don't, I've got no problem with it, Jay Stevens had no, Stevens had no problem with that, and then the the last one is obviously the the stormwater. He does not meet your regulations because he's sending, uh, a little bit of water off the front. And as I said before, I I, if this was a a blank slate we were starting with, I would have a problem with it. It's not a blank slate, I don't know what, I don't think there's a solution, I think Aaron Lachance did did the best he could to say that, that he definitely should. So I think globally, these are, these are reasonable waiver requests, um, and I would recommend granting them all.
And John, let me ask you this, if, um, let's say, because I I I think you agree that, that what you said, that it's gonna impact the applicant in the sense that if the parking's not enough, he's not gonna get, people are gonna leave and not renew their leases. He would have the opportunity to come back in front of us and say in the future, let's say the nineteen units don't work because of parking, and to say, I wanna modify the site plan and change the use of the, those floors, am I correct or not, John?
You, you're, well.
Am I operating can of work, may I operate can of work by?
No, 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 no.
Are they speaking out loud?
I think Kevin and maybe Mike were on the board when we suffered through the cutter mill, uh, site plan. It it's a gray area, I mean, certainly, the the building inspectors and and probably the select board will be the ones that sort of make a decision as to what rises to the level of a change in use. The sort of, the the general rule of thumb is that if a, if a use is more intensive, generally measured by parking, a si- uh, an an amended site plan would be, would be in order. In this case, uh, what are you gonna do that's more intensive, I mean, I I I, so, we're approving residential and commercial on the first, in, uh, first floor. I I suppose if if Jeff wanted to change the 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 upper floors to something more intensive, more commercial, yes, they'd be back here. If they, if 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 he finds it doesn't work, and he wants to eliminate residential and go to warehousing, I don't know if he'd ever come back here, we'd just probably make the change, the town would probably just say, yeah, it's fine, it's less intensive.
Okay.
My dream, uh, would be that one of these days Mick decides to sell this vacant lot to the to 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 the owner of the Blue and Mill, and 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 that that could be used in concert with this, but, you know.
A water park.
Water park. It's, uh, well, but but, you know, that's the only opportunity for expansion, and it's it's, it basically, as you know, it's a vacant lot, so. Um, if the board, if if if, John, if you think that the board is gonna vote in favor of all four of these waivers, I would take them as a whole. If if there's someone that says, geez, I really don't feel comfortable with the third one, but I feel comfortable with it, then you could do them individually, but I don't.
Would someone like to begin a motion to, uh, approve the four waivers?
I like the motion.
Uh, as as as, act one complete, vote as opposed separately? Kevin says aye.
Alright.
So, uh, the motion passes, for those in favor of, um, all the waivers on, the four waivers, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. And the motion passes, so the waivers have been granted. And then I believe the next step, incorrect, well, so John, did you wanna add something else, um, at this point?
There's just some minor things that I I I would like, you you brought up the sidewalk, I I think, I know Jeff said we could leave it on there. I don't like doing that, because I don't want someone in two years saying, you know, we're all dead and gone, what happened to that? I'd rather say, and I know, I don't wanna have Jeff spend money unnecessarily, but there are some minor changes in here, I just wanted to go through them real quickly. And and I'm probably being a little bit nitpicky. Note, note six, I really think should be amended, just so it's correct. You you've now granted that waiver, uh, twenty-four, uh, is required, and he's provided twenty-three and a half, so I think that should be amended. It's a, really a keystroke. Um, he's got some spelling errors that I'm sort of nitpicky about, he's, he's got parking areas to be stripped, they're actually being striped, I'd like those corrected. Um, the sidewalk, I really think, and maybe we should talk about it as, or you should talk about it as a board, but I think that sidewalk should be removed, because I I do think it's, it doesn't make sense. And then my final comment was, I think Tobin got this wrong, um, if you look over the retaining wall, uh, to the left of the front parking lot, below the three, uh, full paint tanks, he's got a note that says, handrail required, it's not a handrail, it's actually a barrier, and and because the retaining wall is so high, it's a gar- it's a guardrail, it's not a handrail, so all I'm asking is to change that note to barrier or guardrail.
Right.
Because you're not gonna put a.
Well, actually, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I was looking at the site plan, and then, you know, when you added the handrail, and then the the scope of the wall, I was thinking what would really look nicer, um, is if I do like a really nice granite wall, like a hand stacked granite wall around this tree, but then just do like a nice gradual grass slope there, like, I was thinking about later, and it's like.
This is your site plan, I could care less, I wouldn't build a wall there, but, because I think it's, honestly, you're gonna, it it, I think it's nine feet high, or eight feet, nine feet.
Damn.
You're gonna need a big loader to get snow up and over, I think it's stupid.
Yeah, I I just think it's gonna be ugly.
Hey, this is your site plan, so, I'm, I, all I'm saying is, it is not a handrail, it's a gra- if you can grade it, and and I don't, I I think it's stupid.
It'll look nicer.
Yeah, I think it'll look nicer.
I think it'll look nicer, yeah, it'd be softer, and then I could do a nice granite feature around the tree.
And I, if it were me, and again, this, I I only respond to your, your, the plans, if it were me, out of terraces, I would put, you know, three, a four-foot wall, and a step back five feet, and then another four-foot wall, but, you know, if you, if you can grade it and get rid of, all I'm saying is, it's not a handrail, it's a, it's a guardrail, or a barrier. So i- if that goes away through grading, I don't think this board cares, it actually would eliminate a little bit of impervious surface, so.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, more grass is better, but, um, you know, that could have.
As long as you can stabilize it.
Yeah, as long as it was allowable slope, yeah.
Well, it's gonna be level, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, you know, two-to-one slope.
Yeah, allowable slope, like, I know there's.
Sure, well, we don't have, no, if it's two-to-one, it's fine, it.
Two-to-one, yeah, as long as it's mobile, right, like, that's making something.
As long as it's stable, it doesn't slump up, you know, slump off, and they would have a.
We would like it on a.
Yeah, it's gonna be mowed, so, but so.
Yeah.
So, would I put a note on the site plan? May or may not, like, you know, as far as the wall, is that?
Well, if you, if now you're saying you may not put that wall, you could, you could say retaining wall, uh, retaining wall or, uh, or or.
Grass slope.
Or graded slope, you know, I don't care, it's like, yeah, this is your site.
Okay, I'd rather just have that note in there.
So if that's, then then if that, if that's the case, then I, then that that needs to, so make that change, that, I don't think anybody on this board cares. And then the last thing that I sort of beat on last, at the last meeting, John, was, uh, lighting. There was a little bit of light spilling over, um, into the entrance, I talked about that with Jay, John, uh, Jay, Tobin, uh, Jay and Tobin. The only real lights, light spilling is is right over here, and it's on, it's into the entrance on Main Street, but if you look at the edge of pavement across Main Street, there's no light trespass, actually, I'm not sure, it was point one, but there's a street light there that's causing that, so. They've done everything they can, every, all the other parking lines are wrong, it's zero, so I I've got no problem with it. So I.
Lighting was a concern of, uh, their public comment, and also spillage over here, where it merged with the existing railroad avenue there.
Yep.
And they're going to expand, um, projections of, of the candlelight.
And if you look at, it's almost zero at the lot, right on the other side of the lawn, I mean, they go down the, they go down to zero point two in the middle of the road, and you don't see it, but I suspect that if you went a little bit further, it'd be zero.
So you've, you've now seen all the areas that we didn't see last time that that chart was.
Right, yeah, yeah, they added this, they added some over here, and then they added this.
Well, that was, that was just a public, public answer, questions about that.
Yeah, right. Absolutely, yep, yep.
And so now you've seen everything?
Yep, yeah, I'm, and I'm, you know, I'm, yep. And remember, I don't know this site like you guys do, so when I say stop.
So, John, do we take a vote on the changes you've recommended?
I guess what I, so here's what I would do, I I would, um, I guess I would make a motion, uh, well, this is what I would, I I think you can, you're ready to approve this, with the conditions that the the plan changes that I just discussed be made. I don't think we require surely, do we, for a site plan? I don't think so. I don't think the board's ever done it, um. Pretty sure, I don't think the board's ever had, ever had required any, any plan, but I don't recall myself, some of these, yes, but.
For the, for something like, it's for subdivision, I think, for this existing building.
Yeah, I don't, so I I I guess I would make, I would move to to approve the the, uh, site plan subject or with the following, with the only condition that, um, well, here are the conditions. Payment of all fees, I'm not sure if oil tanner was paid or not, but they have to be paid. I don't know about, uh, civil consultants, if their, their fee comes out of the application fee, but I don't know, they may have run over, I don't really know, so. It would be civil consultants, consultants and oil tanner, that the plan changes, the, the, um, well, I'll, I'll be, no. Plan note six be amended to say twenty-three and a half feet instead of twenty feet. The words stripped be changed to striped. The sidewalk on the southeast corner of the driveway be removed. And that the retaining wall note be amended to say guardrail or barrier, not handrail. Uh, and also, if they wanna change it to say, this, the, uh, the area may be graded in lieu of a, uh, of of a retaining wall, that's fine as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, make sure I have it right here, so. One, first condition is payment of all fees.
Payment of, oh, sorry. Payment of all fees.
Number two is change number six to twenty-three and a half feet.
Yep.
Where's, where's stripped to to strike?
Yep.
Where that, um.
Where's the?
Where is that?
Right here, right here.
Okay, so on, okay.
Yeah, on the site plan.
So, okay, so, okay.
See, on plan.
On the site plan, C one. You've got C.
Stripped to stripe on plan, C one, just we have it down here.
Yep. Yep.
And then remove sidewalk on south. And then remove sidewalk on southeast side.
Uh, uh, Main Street driveway.
Yeah, southeast side, Main Street Drive, and then, um, remove handrail.
Change handrail to barrier slash guardrail. And if they wanna amend it to say that the retaining wall may be, may not be installed and grade, and the site area be graded instead, that's, that's acceptable.
Hey, John?
Yep.
The, the, the plan, and the plan, and it's still dated in September?
Yeah, oh, and I guess the fourth one is the issue date of the plan should be changed to something else.
What was changed?
Where's his revision date? Yeah, but the issue date, really, well, I don't know, I don't know how he does it, I don't know. I said the issue date. See the revision block?
Yeah, it's here.
It's there, that's, I guess that's okay.
So it was, it was scarce that one?
And she, we lied to her, she did not apply in August, this is September.
No, I, I sent the guys out in August, but you were... That was my first, we... That will forget that one, not that one. I was gone in August.
And whatever.
Just after.
Alright, so I...
Should the issue date be amended or...
No, this is the revision block, revision history, he'll, he's gonna add another line here that'll say revision six per planner or whatever he's gonna say. That's what I have.
I'll make the motion to approve this project based on the, uh, conditions we just reviewed, the total of four, four of them. I would make that motion to approve the subject.
I'm so sorry, I have six.
Why don't I re...
Why don't you, you're probably better for the record.
I'll move that, we accept the, uh, project as completely with the following conditions. Payment of all fees, uh, change, um, number, site plan, um, site plan reference note number six to twenty-three and a half feet. Change references from strict to stripe on plan C one. Remove sidewalk on, reference on southeast side, Main Street driveway. Remove handrail reference, change to grade or retaining wall. And that's it, right?
That's six.
No, add the revision block.
Tell them I can't, I can't cover it, so...
No, that, that one, John said no.
The scratch, oh, the scratch, okay. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The, uh, motion passes. And now I guess the final issue is...
You don't need to, well, meet all those conditions, obviously, but, um, arrange with, um, Miles, our, our, our chair, to sign the, to sign the...
These, we don't record these, but you should, you're gonna wanna, I would get a, we're gonna probably, I don't know how many the town wants, a couple of signed copies, a couple?
Two, two.
Not a mile or, just a regular? Not a mile or paper.
Paper, okay.
Yep, and then you'll, I would assume you'd wanna sign a copy for your files.
So two full, three full-size?
I would say, in, in stapler, maybe.
So the plan, so the town doesn't, uh, record with the county, but he doesn't...
I, if you wanna record it, I don't, they're never gonna record the site plan, it's too busy, so...
Yeah. Wait, staple what, what are you talking about?
Oh, the sheet.
Oh, the sheet.
Oh, I have this, oh, you want the full set?
Well, it'd be nice, yes, can you give us two full sets stapled together on the edge? So we could, otherwise, we're gonna lose individual plants, the sheets of the set, so two...
So I don't wanna fold it if it's stapled?
No, roll them up.
Roll, roll.
We'll take them, roll, staple them consec, you know, uh...
Gotcha.
Sequentially.
So two full set stapled, roll.
Revised, yeah.
Revised, yes.
Don't forget that part.
And revised.
Yeah, and I think there's, I didn't ask in the book.
Is that so, John?
Yep. Okay.
We'll be looking forward to seeing you, it's like we're getting the building.
Oh, it's your answer, come happen, please.
Was the vote, kept, vote taken?
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is that this, we, we spent, um, years working on trying to get something like this going in the, in the downtown and it's, it's been, it was not easy. And I, I hope to God, first of all, I hope this is a success. Second of all, I hope that you invite the planning board in there to see this thing, because we never get to see the sort of fruits of our labor.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a big party.
We have, these people don't like parties, but it'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's what I heard, yeah, you guys know a lot of...
It would be nice, it just would be nice to see the, you know...
We don't have invited department.
Well, yeah, so it'd be nice to see this thing when it's all done, so.
That'd be awesome.
Actually, if you're up to it too, I'd love to see it before you're, what the interior looks like before, that's a, you know...
Are you sure?
I'm not, I don't, I'm not their micromanager, criticize them. I just want to see.
Yeah, many, a lot of us don't ever get to see, you know, see these buildings, so it would be pretty neat for everybody to see maybe of a, you know, so...
It's a cool building, it was actually the cotton warehouse for the mill, where they used to store the cotton. They built it because they didn't want to lose their supply, because I guess they had one burned down, like a big one. And they lost their supply, so they built this so it wouldn't burn down, it's solid concrete. There's no existing machinery at all, right, just the storage?
No, Bluen would have taken all that out, yeah.
I don't know if they, they were doing a lot of processing, I'm not sure. Well, I wish I could talk to somebody from the historical, uh, you know, society or whatever. There must be somebody who does history in this town, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, there's a couple of us sitting here, but I think, actually, I, I used to work with, um, the son of the original Bluen owner. Still, he lives in Utah now, but I could get you in touch with him. He could tell you all about when his family took over the, the building and turned it into whatever they were building at the beginning. He might be a good resource, want to tell you about...
Actually, Joe across the street, he actually knows a lot.
Yes.
He said he, he worked there during the Marshall plant, like loading trains for World War Two.
Yeah.
Let's see, same backyard.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Alright, well, I think we're done with...
Good luck, you guys.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you for your patience, board.
Yep.
Then I think the next order, if I can correct this, approval of January's minutes.
No, it's, it's the voting.
There's two items.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have a public hearing, right?
We already had the public hearing, we're just voting on the adoption of the stormwater regulations. We were waiting on me finding the magic letter from civil consultant. They did a technical review of the stormwater, it didn't happen that evening, I apologize. They made, um, several recommendations, they were incorporated into the plans that you saw back in, I don't know, when we had the public hearing at this point, now, a couple of months, three, four months ago. Um, our main question, I believe, was where are they gonna go? Where do they fit into the, into the, um, freaking site plan and subdivision regulations? So Mr. Stevens had two suggestions. First recommendation, which I think is probably the easiest, but I'm only one vote, is have the site plan regulations, subdivision regulations, and addendum A, refer to the draft stormwater regulations for analysis requirements rather than listing them separately in all of the documents. So don't go back and plug them in, just have them, I would say have them at the end be appendix, or whatever, um... If there's an already an appendix on this one, I don't know if there is.
There's an addendum A and an addendum B, would it be addendum C?
Sure. Yeah, addendum C. I'm calling it appendix, it should be addendum. It should be addendum C. And in subdivision, are there also two?
They're the same.
So it'll be addendum C.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's the cleanest way to do it, but if not, he suggested...
The, the nice thing about doing it that way is that in five years on the regular change, it's pretty easy to wipe those out.
Right.
And give them all that, for that, for that, for the whole document.
Change addendum.
Yeah.
I would, if people are, I would move that we adopt the stormwater regulations as presented at the public hearing